Peter Janta, 50 Countryway, Green Bush Station. I was going to be joined by Mike Hoffman, my leasing agent, who's family-
And here he is.
Here's Mike.
Good timing.
Just when you talk, just speak into the microphone, you have to move it around.
Should we be able to move that a little bit closer?
Move it closer.
Okay, is that better?
That's great. Okay, thank you.
So what I wanted to do is give you guys an update on where we stand with the project. And I've got a checklist from Bob Vogel I'd like to go through and show what we've done. And if there's any other outstanding issues, we'll get to that. Should we start with where we stand with our neighbor, with the large rocks?
Has he put large rocks there?
No.
Oh, phew, okay.
But he, no, but he had his attorney draft a letter saying-
I know, I saw it.
So I know, but I've been talking with Charlie over the last week and a half. Bill has been out of-
Oh, yep.
Bill has been out since before July 4th, along with our attorney Steve Gard. So I've been in direct communication with Charlie. His, when he first heard about it, his understanding was- He thought it was us that just decided to build the road in the back, in the access, because he was unaware of it. He found out later after the fact that, you know, it was, we bought plans with the road there. So he's eased up a lot. We've been working out an agreement. With Bill being out, we haven't had to put anything in writing. But he's been in communication, and we're just about under agreement. So we're hopefully have something signed by Monday or Tuesday granting access through Charlie, so.
Well, that's a plus.
Is it requiring you to do anything? This agreement you're talking about?
That's what we're working through right now.
You haven't figured it out yet?
If it's, you know, whether it might be a fiscal matter or, you know, or not, we won't pay for it.
Or easily matter, yeah.
Or easily matter. Because it's, you know, it, and on that side of the property too, it's, you know, there's land there and it's, it could be a call an advantage for him in the future potentially too, so.
Okay, all right.
So with the, with regard to the other items, I would like to just go through the report. So Bob Vogel was looking for a final inspection report from the structural engineer, which we have. Final construction control affidavits from the architect.
I'm sorry, you say you have. Has it been submitted to the building department?
I was going to bring everything over to Bob in one package.
Got you.
A punch list for the building on site by the architect has been done. We've got the building permit signed off from the town inspectors for the finals. We, Fire Department Certificate of Compliance, we need to get that. We got the verbal okay from the fire department.
Yes, and I went, I met with Deputy Elliott today. I have smoke certificates for all the units here.
So we've got those sign-offs.
He told me that the alarm was, the sprinklers were all set and everything was in compliance there.
Do they issue you something on the sprinkler and the fire alarm, or is it just the smoke?
We've got the smoke certificates. I'll ask him tomorrow if, what they have in terms of paperwork for the sprinkler system.
Yeah, he wouldn't approve these without the sprinklers or the screens that's moving ready.
And then a fire department memo confirming emergency access is acceptable. That was from last time when they did the test with the trucks. Evidence of fees paid for water and sewer. I've got the sewer permit and the fees paid. And copy of the elevator inspection certificate. We had the elevator state inspector out a week and a half ago. Everything was fine, except one light goes on ahead of a horn on the alarm system, and that was just not acceptable. So we had that rewired so that the horn goes off before the light. And they come back on Tuesday to give us the final sign-off on the elevator.
Okay.
At which time they issue the certificate. And as-built foundation plan-
It's a certificate they hang in the elevator.
That's the certificate that hangs in the elevator.
Okay.
Then the as-built foundation plan is here. And then the final is the approval of the planning board, which we are here to discuss.
All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to Karen.
I guess I have a little different opinion of what's been done. I did talk to Bob this morning, and he told me he didn't have anything except the sewer department, you know, the permit that I forward to everybody. And I do know that when I called the water department, the fees have been paid for the water department. He told me he didn't have anything else this morning. He did not follow up with me the rest of the day. I did talk to Elliot around five after five today. Al told me smoke alarms passed today, and the sprinklers passed too. But there was no, there was no chain, or there's no sign at the emergency egress. And the emergency egress is not constructed with planning board plans. I met Al Elliott and John Cheshire out there the other night to talk about the emergency egress. And we, while we were out there, we noticed that the handicap ramp to Building C was a little bit different from the plans. And so it's a ramp that goes along the side, along the side, and then there's a walkway pathway in front. What that has done is that maybe the parking space is not 18 feet long. There was 16 feet three on one side, and there was 17 feet three on the other side. John has indicated that he talked to McDougal about that. So potentially, the walkway is going to have to be ripped up and the curb reset. John has been, I did not talk to John today. John has been out on, a different John site, in a different town, all day. So that's why we met when we could. So I really can't say that the planning board conditioned that the handicap, that the, well, the handicap ramp isn't per the plan, and it's not, so the parking spaces aren't per the plan. And the, I can't say that condition 46 has really been that, and that's the condition that requires the emergency access and public access pathway be constructed. It's not constructed per the plan. I don't have a recorded owner's agreement. Mr. Janta just gave me the revised parking plan that I had asked him to for last time because one of the parking spaces was labeled parking, what's really the loading area.
Okay, all right.
So I'm really not sure that I can advise the planning board that our conditions are met.
Steve, you were involved from the giddy-up in all of this.
Mm-hmm.
And I came in at the, sort of the tail end of it, when they were dealing with the house, not with this other stuff. So if you would like to speak to these issues, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I guess I would like to know, I would like to hear, sort of, well, let me do two things. One is, you just went through a laundry list of things that you said you have essentially done, none of which, or most of which, has not been delivered to the building inspector.
I need to bring it to the building inspector for your final sign-off.
You're going to bring it as a package?
Yeah.
So, but you have, so you start off by saying you have a final structural inspection report. You have the punch list done. The billing permits are signed off. This is all part of the package you're giving to the billing inspector. The smoke alarms, et cetera, are fine. It says fire department memo confirming emergency access is acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
Remind me if that's-
That was the-
Is that the temporary?
That was the temporary gravel surface. It was acceptable for the town regarding the chain and bollards to be installed once that's paved. He said he would allow us to put up sawhorses and no entry signs to block the entrance to the path, so nobody drives on it. Just temporary, you know, orange construction barrels upside down with a light flashing, something along those lines.
Okay. And we have that? When you talked to the fire department, they were-
When I talked to Al today, he said there's no signage up there, and there's no chains up there. And so during the public hearing, the fire department said that they would like a second means of egress. And-
I guess it gets-
So that's what the planning board conditioned as a second.
I get that, I get that. What I'm trying to get to is, it appears you're saying the fire department said as a temporary nature, they would accept whatever you laid out. And it appears your conversation with them is saying they're waiting for the permanent solution.
Well, the temporary solution is going to be taken offline at some point because they have to construct the permanent solution.
Right.
So.
And you had mentioned that at a previous meeting, that you were very concerned about that.
Well, I am. And I guess I was trying to get the fire department's input on all of that, and it sounds like we have two different representations of their opinion.
My interpretation from Elliot this afternoon is that, you know, we condition something, and, you know, that's how it should be.
I met with Elliot this afternoon to do the smoke certificates, and we walked out back. And he told me that the road, everything there, met their requirements. They tested the trucks. You know, I guess, you know, I'm hearing a different story, but the conversation I had said that everything was fine when there's a couple requirements from the final pavement gets put down that they require. But as of right now, he thought that it was fine.
Well, it sounds like we got two differing opinions here on the, I'd rather the fire department speak for themselves.
I've got their email memo regarding this, if that helps.
And that's, we haven't gotten anything new in writing from the fire department, except the memo from last time.
Okay. Well, I don't think that addresses the whole issue of how do you go from the temporary to the permit without blocking off the emergency access.
What we'll have is, we'll have a paving truck vehicle during the time we pave, and a work truck and a work crew. Should anything happen, we'll remove those and let the access vehicles by. It's not like they'll be left there unattended.
Well, you can't drive on fresh pavement, though.
You can. We'd have to redo it.
A fire truck?
We'd have to redo it. But it's completely feasible, and that was the discussion we had with Al.
Have you put down the gravel?
How did we put it down? With workmen and a truck?
No, have you?
Have you?
Oh, yeah, the gravel's down and compacted and sufficient for the fire department.
There's been a new detail provided to John Cheshire from McDougal this week. It's supposed to be previous pavement, and which involves-
Which is the final-
Which is, in multiple layers.
Uh-huh.
So John hasn't, I mean, we briefly discussed that the other night, and it's, John hasn't gotten back to me on that.
No, he's been on, he's been tough to pin down. So it requires a layer of gravel, infiltration material, an inspection, a layer of gravel, inspection, layer of gravel, inspection, pavement. So we completely plan on performing all that.
None of that's down right now?
None of that's down. We just have the temporary gravel surface that's sufficient for the fire department.
When would you plan to do the permanent?
We're planning on starting that work. It was the third week of July, which is coming up. And then we're at the mercy of the paving contractor for putting the pavement down. We kind of have to coordinate with John Cheshire, the town engineer. So that could take a week's time to get the layers prepped for the asphalt, which at all point in time, we'll make sure it's accessible by the fire department. And then it's a matter of the asphalt company saying, yes, we will do your work. They don't like to do the, they don't give you a scheduling date until they see everything is ready for them. Then they put you in their queue. So we hope to have it done by early August.
You've got, we've got the fees paid, the elevator inspection certificate will have to be there, obviously. The as-built foundation plans is in your package?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess my thoughts on the emergency access is that as long as the fire department is okay with it as a temporary measure, and okay with the measure, the approach to preserve emergency access during the permit construction, and I would like to hear from them that they are, then I would be willing to say that, you know, obviously, all these other things have to get done as well, but I would be willing to say, as a temporary occupancy, we could do that, right? I wouldn't, I wouldn't have agreed to a permanent occupancy-
I wouldn't ask for that.
Until the, all of the work is done. But I would like to hear from the fire department on the permanent, on the temporary and how you're going to, how you're going to maintain emergency access during the construction of the permanent fix. If they're comfortable with whatever plan you've developed, will maintain that access, then I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And frankly, that could be a, I don't think you need, I don't think you need the planning board on that. I think we could leave that too.
A discussion with Al Elliott and something in writing.
And Karen.
And Karen.
Okay.
Okay.
That would kind of be, it sounds like that's the key, sort of, remaining open issue at this point.
Yes, it is. Okay.
Oh, let me, one other thing. Handicap ramps.
Yeah, the handicap ramp.
What's going on with that?
So, I just heard that we were off by six inches on two parking spaces? Is that the, and we have a plan, we can identify those, and so-
You said 16 feet?
Measured 16 feet, three inches on the-
That's one foot nine short.
On, in front of Building C, on the left side, down here, 17 feet three down here.
Okay.
Now, I do a foot now. I was at the site today, and McDougal was cutting the sidewalk in to meet that, and then they were going to have a mason, I believe, there tomorrow to create the sidewalk width, correct sidewalk width, and allow, try to get, try to reach the 18, is it 18 feet?
18 feet.
18 feet.
So he's working on that tomorrow.
So what does that do with the ramp? Does the ramp have to be moved?
So there's a ramp, and then there's a sidewalk in front of the ramp. And then there's a gap of like a couple feet of loam.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a couple feet. It's like-
18 inches. We could certainly have, there's room for the ramp, plus the sidewalk, plus the foot and a half that needs to cut back, from what I'm told.
Okay, it's not, it's not, it's not two feet. It's a regular shape. One end is narrow, and then the other end. We didn't measure that the other night.
Did it look like they could get standard parking spaces in there?
John did think that there is a solution to the, yes.
I was there with McDougal, and we're measuring it out along with the mason, and there is enough space per the measurements that they had. He had told me today that they, I don't know if it was John or it's coming out tomorrow to relook at the new design that they have there.
And are those handicap parking spaces that we're talking about?
There's one handicap space and one regular space.
Yeah. Well, I would say we want to get that one addressed as well, particularly since it's a handicap space.
Right, it's a handicap space.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you all set?
I don't know, but I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you. Ben, comments?
I don't really have anything particular at this time. I guess my sentiments are similar to Steve's in that I could be okay kind of doing a temporary occupancy, provided that these couple loose ends are-
Dealt with.
Yeah, when we get the final answer.
Okay. Heather?
No, what I would ask is that we have it in writing, please, not just, just-
Verbal.
Verbal, that we needed a writing.
From the-
Oh, from the fire department, a letter, sure.
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Is that it?
And that's it, yeah.
Okay. Anybody in the public one have comment? All right. Well, I think Mr. Pritchard has put it quite well. So Karen, anything further?
I think last time, the board really didn't, I didn't get a clear direction on the board on B, but as I indicated to you, one of the units that was supposed to be a one-bedroom is really, being marked as a one-bedroom, but it really is a two-bedroom. And I don't know what you want to do about that for-
Though we did address that.
Yeah, we did.
Right, we said from a sewer perspective, right, it was a two-bedroom, right?
It's being charged, it's being charged.
It's being charged as that, but it, it's a one-bedroom.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
What the projected plan that I want to do, because I'm, is take the current door frame off, so there's no door to the entrance, and where the closet is, put a built-in desk. Take the doors off where the closet is, because it's, it's un, it's-
It's unusable.
Unmarketable, unusable as a two-bedroom as is.
Right.
And the way it shows.
Besides which it's not.
Yeah, well, the way it shows right now, everyone, no one runs, no one.
I think we were okay with that, if I remember right, yeah.
Yes, yes. I mean, I know you're okay in Building A, but I just wasn't, unclear on Building C.
Yep.
And condition 44 requires that the owner's agreement be recorded prior to occupancy.
Now, were we waiting for the, is the town signed off on that?
I, did I send you-
I think we were waiting for-
Did I send you comments after last?
Yeah, I saw a red line last time.
Yeah. Did I not send you Mr. Pritchard's comments? I mean, I know I sent town council's comments.
Yeah, and there was Steve Gard, who's unfortunately on vacation. Can we, can we agree that we'll certainly have that?
It's on the list, right? I would say, you got a long list of things. They all have to be checked off. The last one would be the temporary occupancy permit, right? So add that to the list, having that recorded.
So you want that recorded before the temporary, so you've all-
Yeah. Shouldn't be that hard, right?
Well, it is if the attorney's not available.
He doesn't have an assistant?
No. I thought she was that easy.
How about the secretary? Sometimes they-
He is a paralegal.
Yeah, yeah.
Paralegal, I don't know.
Sure. You can figure it out. I know you can.
Okay.
Okay.
And so on condition 46, what was the board's pleasure on the, it says the emergency egress slash public access path must be constructed prior to the occupancy of any building. The, the public access path is really more on the other side of the sidewalk, not on the Building C side, the one that they're seeking temporary occupancy for.
Mm-hmm. So that'll be ready in August. The sidewalk from the front of Countryway all the way to the back.
I think that'd be okay. I think that'd be okay. I mean, nobody's using it as public access right now, anyway, right?
And plus you're constructing.
This is new public access, so if it comes a little bit later, that's fine. It's still going to be tied in to be, you know, it's all temporary until that's in, right, as well, so.
How's Building B coming?
We're about a month behind, so that looks like we're looking for a September 1 occupancy, and probably October for the front building.
So, Steve, you feel that it's okay for them to go forward with temporary?
I'm leaving it to Karen to make sure all the items get checked off. If we run into a roadblock, then the answer would be no.
Okay.
Right? That's the way I would do it. Would you, or would you rather them come back again?
No, no, I don't think it's necessary.
I think we've addressed this. You know what your laundry list is.
Yeah.
That there's a couple of open items are really going to be, have to be reviewed and signed off by Karen, so that we can say we've hit the whole laundry list, and we're ready to do a temporary occupancy permit. And if, you know, if you think there's a, obviously, if there's a disagreement that you can't resolve, then it'll have to come back here before the-
So can we just do a recap of those items, Karen? Other than Bob Vogel sign off, I've got his list.
Right, so from the planning board perspective, you wanted a memo basically from the fire chief, or from Deputy Elliott, that he's willing to accept the emergency egress as is, and that he understands it'll be on commission for a while when they build the, when they put in the permanent, and that-
Well, I would just-
And the method of blocking it off is-
Yeah, I would, I would say he has to sign off on the method of construction that preserves access if they need it, right?
That is item one. Getting the handicap spaces squared away at 18 feet?
Yep. Well, at this point, you should do both parking spaces, not just the handicap.
Well, it's just the two, that's what I meant, the two spaces, yeah.
Record the owner's agreement?
Record the owner's agreement.
Where does that get recorded, this one?
At the registry.
Registered, okay, registered.
Yeah, over in Rockland? Is that where this is?
I don't know.
It's in Plymouth.
Plymouth, yeah, you gotta go Plymouth.
Unless there's a closer place, I'd go driving to Plymouth.
I think those are the-
Those are the basic things for temporary for Building C. There's still items that are not done here, not completed, and some of them have to do with deed restrictions, but they're for Building A, et cetera, and the public access path. So that's, that's further off down the line.
Yeah. I think if we get all these done, and you can at least begin to rent the units, it's sort of a-
That would be helpful.
A good balance, because I assume you have people who are ready to move in.
We have eight homeless people right now waiting to move in.
Yeah.
They're in your garage?
I have more storage facilities filled up right now.
Okay, so are you satisfied?
I am, yeah.
Very good. And the board? Yes. All right, Karen. It's in your court.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
All right.
I think we made some progress here this evening.
I think we have, thanks.
And you'll remember, Mr. Vogel will be gone by quarter of 12 tomorrow morning, so-
One other thing that you do need to get resolved-
I'll swing down in the morning to sign off of, of-
Yeah.
We need to get the, a butter signed off on this thing, too. He's sort of saying, we're working on it, but you should have as part of your checklist-
He has the checklist.
That he's signed off on it, too.
Okay.
Attorney verbiage.
That probably ties into what the fire department requires as well.
Sure.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll be back early for Bob. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Next, Mr. Rockland.
Follow-up from approval, 1 Crescent Avenue. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Identify yourself with a record, please.
Steve B. Rockland. 1 Crescent Ave Realty Trust, how's that? We got a new one. At the last meeting, we had closed, and you had issued the site plan administrative review, and you had asked for two things after that. Steve, you would, you wanted to see the apron that we were going to put in the front, in the street layout, which we did, and we mirrored what the neighbors have out there.
Great, thank you.
I actually was able to chat with one of the neighbors on-site out there one day, kind of, he waited for me in the street, so I was able to go through what we actually did at that meeting, so I think they might be a little bit more comfortable. And you had asked for a list of what was on-site in the area of the driveway. Well, I retained Brad Holmes, who usually does my wetlands work for me, but he's a scientist and a botanist, and I'm sure Ben probably knows him. I don't know if he's worked with him before or not, but Brad went out, and I had actually made a comment at the last meeting that we had a tree that was right near the area of the driveway that I thought was snapped off about three or four feet high on the house. And I think the response was that there were no snapped-off trees in the area.
That looks snapped.
I'm glad, I'm glad to see that what I saw was what was there.
Yeah.
That basically took down most of the stuff. You see, there's like three trees down there, and that's leaning on the house, it's against the porch on the house.
What's the other picture?
I think there was a, there was a comment that was made that there were rhododendrons in this area.
Yeah.
And there are no rhododendrons on-site, but even if there were, they're not native species to that area. Even though they're not invasive, they're not native, you can- I'm glad, I'm glad to see that what I saw was what was there. That basically took down most of the stuff, you can see there's like three trees down there, and that's leaning on the house, it's against the porch on the house.
What's the other picture?
I think there was a, there was a comment that was made that there were rhododendrons in this area, and there are no rhododendrons onsite, but even if there were, they're not native species to that area. Even though they're not invasive, they're not native, you can go to the blooming place and pick them up all you want, but I had Brad look at the entire site to see if there were any, if there was anything other than the Japanese maple, which Karen came out and saw. We're going to do our best to see if we can save that, and he said it does need some trimming, but we're going to do what we can to try to save that, and if not, it will be transplanted, but we'll, we're not just going to go kill it, we're going to see what we can do, because it's a neat tree. I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty cool. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, and do you have a list of, a plant list of what you're going to put?
It's not, well, what you asked for was to find out what was coming out where the driveway was going. There's, Brad actually forwarded to me a list of plants that can be used in, in a beach-type area, a lot of different stuff that will flourish there, and because we don't know what's exactly going there for houses and things like that, I can't really do a planting plan, but we're going to incorporate some of the stuff that he has in the list he gave to us, which is all Cape Cod-type stuff, when we finally get to a point where each house will be landscaped. We're not, we're not going to leave them bare, they're, I mean, these are going to be pretty high-dollar houses, so there's going to be some significant landscaping going around the houses.
Did this require CONCON?
No, we're outside the floodplain, we're outside everything, it was just planning board. Again, this was a pretty simple project, I mean, when you lay it out. Not simple to figure out, but simple to, you know, go through the process.
Ben, have your concerns been addressed?
Oh, I mean, my, my point about last time was more just, you know, whether this was just a common driveway, or whether it triggered more of the concerns during a typical site plan review. So, I mean, this is, this is fine, I mean, I agree. From what I saw, most of this stuff is just scrubby, kind of junk. There isn't a lot of plants there that are of high ecological or aesthetic value, so...
Patty?
No, it needs to be cleaned up, that's all, the area.
And you are going to save the maple tree? That's the...
The Japanese maple, yeah, the Japanese maple is out in front, so we're, we'll do what we can for that one, and I'll stake it off, so they don't mistakenly take it out of there, but there's some vines and stuff that have grown up through that, and that stuff has to get cleared out of there as well, so that the tree will stay well. The only other comment that I had, and I noticed it in part of the decision, and Karen and I had chatted about this a little bit, on my site plan, we have two overhead electric services, one that goes into one side of the house, and one that goes into the other. Neither of those are in the driveway area, but on the decision, in the boilerplate stuff in the decision, if we do, say, a three-lot common driveway that's, you know, four or five hundred feet long, we do underground electric on that driveway, like we did on Hathley Road, but this one has two services going in, but neither of them in the driveway area, so, you know, the houses are so close to the street, we'd like to just be able to keep the services that, you know, that are there, it's not interfering with anything.
Are they underground?
No, they're, they're overhead right now.
Can you put them underground?
We have to put two telephone poles in to go thirty feet. I mean, each one have to have a pole, because they come from different areas. That will, that will ruin the look of what's there. I mean, it's less obtrusive, I think, to keep the two lines that are there, one's on one street, one's on the other, so I think that makes a better situation, and again, it's not in the driveway area.
So, the poles on one street, and you have the existing one...
They're on the opposite side of the road.
They're on the road, though, right?
Yeah, but they're on the opposite sides of the roads, so we'd have to, you can't go underground in the road itself, so we'd have to set poles on our own property for each house, and then go underground for thirty feet.
So the, the services, well, there's only one house there now.
But there's two services, and they show on the plan, one, one comes in from Bridge Street, one comes in from Circuit.
And it's all overhead over the road?
Yeah, yeah, it's all existing. So we just temporarily take that down, and basically, you know, let the electric company replace... It's a lot of work to try to go underground for thirty feet, I mean, it's just... And I don't think the neighbors would want to see the poles in there, just not good, so...
Steve, you all set?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Anybody in the public that needs to say anything? Okay, we're all set, Stephen.
Thank you very much, I can go back to Carol's party.
Still ongoing?
It was when I left. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next is, at quarter of eight, is Welby Builders. Is anybody here from Welby Builders? It's Paul Maribito. Are you here from Welby Builders?
Yes. I was told around seven forty-five.
Yeah, well...
I'm expecting Paul.
All right.
Why don't we do something else while we wait?
Okay, we'll go to Old Business, New Business. We need a vote to rescind site plan waiver on fifty-two Countryway. Karen?
Yeah, we found out after the last meeting that they had to take down whole buildings. We didn't get a site plan review in today, so if you have this...
So they've already developed the new design and all that? For the new building?
We, I haven't really looked at it extensively, but we have an application received late this afternoon, and it's, the design is pretty much going to stay the same, but, you know, the walls are, obviously will have to be from current building code standards, so it can support the second floor. So we'll be distributing that, and I'm probably looking at other designs for that, because I need to schedule a design review committee meeting on that.
So they will do that before they come to us with the site plan review?
Yes, they will come, they will meet the design review committee before they come back to the planning board.
Sounds cool.
All right, oh, any questions, Ben?
Patty?
No. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, moved at the planning board, rescind the site plan waiver for fifty-two Countryway, got the trudies as the existing morning glorious building, will not be able to support a second floor, it will need to be removed entirely to the ground. This information was obtained after the last meeting on June fourteen, two thousand and eighteen. This building work is not minor or insignificant in nature of effect, and thus, a site plan administrative review is required.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous, thank you. All right, minutes.
I moved to approve the minute meetings for June twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a...
Second.
Any additions or corrections?
No, all set.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a vote. Accounting.
I moved to approve the requisition of three hundred and sixty dollars to Chester Consulting Services LLC for site inspections of fifty Countryway to Western Graphics for four hundred and eighty dollars for printing of zoning maps under the Municipal Modernization Act.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a vote. Okay, we have eight minutes. Legislaw reports. Nothing?
No.
No?
Nothing's happening.
Well, no. CPC met on Monday night, Roach Field was in, and they are over budget by eighty thousand dollars. And believe it or not, it has to do with stormwater. The review of stormwater, and what they have to do to ensure that it doesn't, the water doesn't go anywhere that it's not supposed to go. So...
Was that, were they surprised that they had to do that?
Ah, maybe a little bit, but it's done, and CPC approved this, it's going before town meeting. First, they have to come before the selectmen, and talk to them, goes to advisory board, and then it will go to town meeting in the fall. And also, too, at the same time, Wombatuck School was in, and they did a terrific presentation, which they are going to do tonight, so, and it was looked upon very favorably, I think that was the impression that was received, by CPC. The only thing is CPC does not want to fund the full amount of three hundred thousand dollars. They're willing to, as they've looked at Hathley and Jenkins, to come up with, once fundraising happens, with a portion, but not all of it.
But we'll hear that, about that in a minute?
Yes, we will.
What's the sort of mix of what's been applied for at CPC between recreation, open space, and housing?
What, right now?
Yeah.
Actually, there are only two items, and they're both recreation.
And what do we do, what was the last set that we approved? Weren't they recreation, too? The, the parking at the ball field?
That's, we approved that, but they don't have enough money. So now they're back for more money.
I see.
And then, the dog park, I think is going to be a real difficult situation.
Because it's more money, too, right?
Hundred thousand dollars more.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's that, and you are, Mr. Welby is here.
Mr. Sharon.
Mr. Sharon, I'm sorry, come forward.
Five in a row. Who? What?
All right, gentlemen, if you would kindly introduce yourselves, and then tell us what you want.
Paul Sharon.
Paul Maribito from Ross Engineering.
We, we have a letter before the board to ask that the construction of the septic system be taken, be moved from the phase two of the SWIP plan sequencing to phase four.
Karen?
Well, I asked them to come before the board, because you gave me some instructions that you wanted to follow sequencing on the plan, and so that's why they're before the board tonight. Right now, construction is going very, very well out there. The trees are mostly cut, the topsoil is all then stripped, road has been roughed, roughed in, and they're working on some of the detention basins. We do have just one other update on, that we received a phone call yesterday, and it was addressed, a woman, a butter on Cedric, wanted, thought the tree cutting was too close, and we met out, met out there this morning, and we agreed to pull the line in a little bit to try to save these two large trees. I think that is going to be probably an insignificant change, can probably, they're just going to put the tape on the other side of the trees, they're going to lay out the toe of the slope, then we're going to go back and re-diss it, and then see how much it changed, but I think it's probably going to be insignificant, but the trees have a significant amount of large bittersweet vine, large grapevine, and catbrya down at the base that I would recommend to help save the life of the tree, that that be selectively cleared out of there.
Otherwise, you won't have to cut it down, it'll die on its own.
Well, this is true.
So, and what about, how do you feel in terms of the sequencing?
Do we have the sequencing list? I did not, I didn't pull it up, and I couldn't find it, so...
It's on the, it's on the SWIP, it's on the SWIP plan, which was asked for as part of the erosion control for the project, and under, under phase two, it's clear-cut swastika for the berms, which they're doing right now, constructing the basins, constructing basins one and four. Construct shared septic system leaching area, we work some of the grading, maintain sediment traps, and then in phase three is where you start to put some of the utilities in. And phase four is really where you do your lot development.
And this is, so this was your schedule? So I don't understand why, why you're changing it now.
The crux of the issue here, and I think Paul can probably elaborate on it, is that, why don't you take that question?
The main purpose of the SWIP plan, which was done quite a while ago, it was done before we knew when the project would even start. The whole purpose of that, in a nutshell, is to control and minimize the amount of any potential erosion you would have throughout the course of the onsite construction. It just so happens that the construction is just starting in the dry weather, which is optimal for putting in your basins, which you're doing first. That'll, and the basins will be, they'll be vegetated, so when we do get the heavy rains later in the year, they'll, they'll be in place to accept any runoff during the construction phase of the houses. The utilities will be placed, well, the soils are dry, the water tables are high out there, but they're, but right now, they're, they're down quite a bit. So it makes sense to get the road in, the utilities in, and these basins in, and vegetated. The area of the septic system is a, is a very small area of construction relative to the entire project. What that leaching area consists of is simply removing the first two or three feet of unsuitable soil, which is your loom and subsoil, and importing sand. There wouldn't be any erosion from that, because sand is very permeable, but the access to that site is over the existing driveway, you know, which is high and dry. But again, it's important to realize that the most important thing to do is to get the rest of the work done that would have more of an impact on, on any erosion on the site while the weather is dry. The other thing is, Paul did mention that we're still looking into the potential for sewer. The sewer is right next door at the Hathley School. That's one thing, the other thing is that the infrastructure...
Just a comment on that?
The...
We didn't review a project that was going to tie into town sewer, and if that's something that you're proposing to do, then you've got to come...
No, that's, no, we, the...
I don't agree with that.
Well, the infrastructure and the roads being built with a sewer in it, the only thing left for the septic system would be that leaching area, because the pump chambers within the layout...
Saying, if you're talking about tying into town sewer, that was not part of the project.
That's correct, it wasn't.
And I would not agree with that.
Well, the board did get a letter from DPW asking that we perhaps try to tie into sewer, because there are a couple of wells, twelve, fifteen hundred feet on the other side of the street, that they would prefer not to have a septic system.
That came, went?
You know, this is, this is a long shot.
This was a, this was a, and it was a request, and I mean, it was, it wasn't feasible at the time, and so this is the way that it was permitted.
Right.
I'm not inclined to do anything else, unless anybody's going to come back and talk about it.
No, the sites being constructed right now in accordance with the plans, and that includes the infrastructure for the onsite septic systems. The onsite infrastructure for the septic system within the roadway layout is the sewer pipe, the manholes, and the pump chamber, and the piping that goes with that. The only thing after that would be to build the leaching area. But they're probably at least a year away from having a house that they could sell, and prior, prior to that being sold, they would have to have the leaching area put in. Again, the, all, all the other infrastructure would be in, you know, the leaching areas are relatively easy and quick operation.
You know what this sounds like to me?
Pardon?
You know what this sounds like to me, Paul? That you're hedging your bets, that what you're doing is flipping the leaching field to the end, so that in the course of the year, you can somehow manage to get everything connected to town sewer.
That's not accurate, Ann, let me explain.
Well, you know, really...
Let me explain to you what happened here. Greg Tansey drew this plan without any knowledge that we would be held strictly to this SWIP sequencing. He did not know that. He never consulted with us, he didn't consult with the contractor, he simply thought it would be a good idea to do it at the time. We never thought it would be a good idea to do it at the time. Number one, because it's easier to access that property, and the way it's laid out, and Karen has seen it multiple times.
You say "we," who are you talking about?
My partner and I.
But didn't Greg work for you?
Greg worked for us, but he did not know, and I've talked to other engineers, and this is not the way it works in other towns. He did not know that we would be strictly held to that SWIP plan. In addition to that, there is no environmental impact at all. SWIP plan is environmental for stormwater, that there's no difference between whether or not we build this thing now or we build it later. That there's no difference between whether or not we build this thing now, or we build it later. Quite frankly, if we build it now, I have to borrow three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it'll cost me about twenty thousand dollars just to carry it, to have it sit there. It, it makes no sense. It really makes no sense. We're not, we're not asking for anything here, really, other than to, to, to move from one phase to the other. There's no.
I'll carry you both.
Honestly, Ann, I don't think we're gonna get sewer, I really, I, most, most people don't think we are. But it is an option for us. Um, I, I.
Not till we hear it back.
Right now, this project is flowing smoothly. All of our pipe, all of our, um, the stumps, the, the, some piling of, uh, of gravel, is, is all accessed through this driveway, it's working great. I, I think Karen will attest to that. Um, we just don't wanna build it right now.
And what happens if you wait to the end to build it? How does that change the stormwater management?
Not, not at all.
Nothing, because that, that, the, the leaching area?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about? It's, uh, nothing more than a sand pit. So, one, one.
You have to get in there and dig and, and construct, right?
Yeah, but that's right in the front of the.
Yeah, it's in the field in the front.
Right.
What I'm asking is, how does it change the way you manage stormwater during construction?
Not at all.
None at all.
So, when you're building the leaching field, how do you manage stormwater there? How is it proposed?
If, if there was, you know, again, it's a sand pit. If you had to manage some stormwater runoff, you'd probably put some, you'd probably put a silt sock around it, which we show on the plan anyway.
And honestly.
Is it on the plan?
You're, yes. You're digging a hole and you're putting sand in it, what, what is this, there's, can possibly be any runoff, cause it's in a hole.
When you first start, you could have a mess, right? So, there is erosion control that you have to manage here, right?
There's erosion control around the SWIP plan, basically, under the situational subdivision, erosion breaks, you're required to show certain amount of erosion control, sediment subs, et cetera. That's all shown on the SWIP plan, because.
And they can do that by, if they change the sequencing?
It's required under your subdivision regulations, it's required under many down subdivision regulations. But, we ask, if, if they do it as part of the SWIP plan, it's one piece of work, it's money less, it's money less spent, cause it's all in one place, they file this with the feds, and they meet your regulation requirements. So that's why this was filed with, as part of the document, and that shows all the erosion control on it. And.
So, I guess the.
Right now, construction, I, I agree, construction is going very well out there. And the, um, the leaching field is down and they're using part of that staging. They haven't cleared all that area, because they're doing the clearing in phases as, as the board wanted. But the se, the piping for the sewer that would connect down here is gonna be constructed under the road when the road goes in.
Mm-hmm. Could I see that?
So, what, does it matter if it's taken out of sequence?
That's the question.
That's the question.
Probably not at this point, um, probably not. But these are the plans that you approved. So, the leaching field is down here, about part of that, part of it's open out here, part of it, uh, would be, need to be cleared.
So, the, the, the proposal, your proposal now, is that you're gonna build all this infrastructure? And complete it?
Yes.
Before you start on construction in the, in the leaching field?
Yes.
Right? And so, when we say complete it, right? What has, is there anything that has to change to manage stormwater? In the area you're going to construct?
No.
In other words, there are, is that what these dotted lines are, are these the silt fences?
The dark dotted lines, yes.
They will stay in place, even though you've finished all this other work?
Well, we will install them, um, at, at the time we start the work on the system.
Can you just come up and look at this?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. So, this is what you have to build, right? But you're gonna build all this first? Right?
Yes, this is, this is, right, right now.
Here's the septic field, right here.
Right now, this whole area here, and this whole area over here is being used as a staging area, which is the way the contractor.
I get, I get that, that's not really my question. My question is, you're gonna come in and build this road?
Yes.
You're gonna build this road?
Yes.
Build the stormwater infrastructure?
The basins.
The basins here, right? And then you're gonna be done with all of this?
Yes.
And, the question is, do the, do the stormwater erosion control features that are here now stay here while you're building this? Or does this start to get removed?
No, well, we don't have to remove these, the silt socks.
I know you don't have to, but will you? That's what I'm asking, is are you gonna leave all of this in place?
The silt socks are designed to dissolve, so, I mean, we don't, it's never really been addressed whether or not we're gonna leave it in place. But, we, if, if you would say to me, once you build the system at the end of the project, um, take it out, we'd be happy to.
I think, no, no, reverse.
No, I, I just wanna make sure that you build everything else, you don't change the stormwater flows in any way, or erosion control flows in any way, so that when you're building this, we're not gonna end up with a mess, particularly on the street.
This is this right now, out here.
Yep.
Um, so, we'll, we'll, we'll build it around this way, and the, the silt sock part of it. And, there is no, there is no environmental difference between building the septic system at the beginning or building it at the end.
I understand that, and I, it, I've been out there more than once, and it's a flat field.
So, how do you get into this?
There's a road right off the.
This is, yeah, the original driveway into the problem.
Yep.
We're, we're gonna use that to, um, you know, for the construction vehicles, and probably for.
Is that off of the Anvinal?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the existing driveway.
Actually, this basin is now constructed.
Yeah, that basin's, uh.
Yeah, that's, that was roughed in as of this morning, yeah.
Yep. You know, I have to say, all things being equal, I don't really have a problem with, with flipping it, because you, you can't sell any of these houses until that's in place.
Is that called service?
So, it's, um, I don't think that there's anything here. I think, if I understand what Steve is saying.
I just wanna make sure, when you get to this stage, right? Cause right now, if you're doing all this stuff, you got all the erosion control in place, you gotta do all this construction, and then you'll be done, right? But what you're going to do is do all this construction, and then go over here, right? I wanna make sure when you're over here, you don't end up sending water in different directions, you don't end up spilling particularly dirt and all of that onto Anvinal Road.
No, it won't happen, you.
As long as, as long as all of this erosion control stays in place, it's okay with me.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
Ben? Okay. Do we need to vote on this? Whoa, are you alright? Do you have anything?
No, I guess I would just tell Mr. Tansey that we do things a little differently here in Sitchwood the next time he has a drawing for us, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, well, we will remember this.
Yes, you will, yes, you will. Okay, um, do we need?
I do wanna point out that the note that came out that said we still have the possibility connecting to town sewer, that's a different animal altogether, and I think we talked about it, I just want to be clear on that.
Yeah, I, we really think that's a remote possibility, but, but, but we're, we, we may as well go down the road, because it's maybe better for everybody if we connect the sewer.
Depends on the available capacity.
Well, I know, I, if, if, just if, if it happened.
Right.
It'll be a bit, it'll be good for some people and maybe not others.
In, in the long short, if you were a betting man, in the long, in the, uh, the long shot is that we could do it.
Hmm?
So, nice day, yeah.
Yeah, really. Okay, do we need to vote?
Yeah, I, I think you should do a vote, to just basically say to change that, uh, leaching field construction from Phase Two to Phase Four is acceptable, but if the erosion control brings, um, installed as shown on plans.
We don't have anything written, do we?
No, I just need that.
Well, then, as.
Karen said.
What Karen, what Karen said.
I move what Karen said.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, we have an informal dis- discussion for Wampatuck School.
Ladies? These two, I think they would help with the discussion, their aerial views.
We have a lot of stuff.
Are they not in this package?
Yeah, we have lots of stuff.
We have a lot of stuff.
Do you have something different?
Alright, what's more paper?
Let's have some more.
Uh, this is a clear review of the actual.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No, that's not in the packet.
No, this isn't.
Alright, Tara, if you would be kind enough to identify yourself and your sidekick there, please?
I'm, I'm Tara Knottan, I'm a co-president of Wampatuck PTO.
I'm Linda Whitney, I'm the pre, the principal of Wampatuck School.
Thank you very much, and your presentation?
Well, thank you for having us, first of all. Um, we are, we're in here, obviously, to give you an overview of our CPC application for a replacement playground at Wampatuck School on the south side of the school campus. We've had, um, two meetings with CPC so far, and have gone through a great deal of detail with them, and also answered several questions. We, as Amberbine mentioned, we were just there on Monday, kind of revisiting some of the concerns that they had. And, after that, or, as a result of the first meeting, we actually revised our application that it, we have estimated at this point is a three hundred thousand dollar project, and Wampatuck PTO is committing thirty thousand dollars to that project, that we are kind of taking from our PTO savings as well as fundraising. You have in the information, uh.
I'm sorry, was the thirty thousand on top of the three hundred, or is it?
No.
Part of the three hundred?
It's part of the three hundred, so at this point, we're requesting two hundred and seventy thousand. Um, in that information, we have an overview of the current playground as it stands. And it, it's easy to see sort of on that aerial view, kind of how it sits on the school grounds. Um, it is about twenty-five years old, it was built in nineteen ninety-five, actually, by parents, back when you could build playgrounds, by PTOs, which we can't do anymore. And it has been in the past couple of years falling into pretty severe disrepair in age. And it's at a point now that it can't be rightfully repaired. We've actually had it reviewed by Bob, Bob Vogel, and the playground companies that could come and help with replacement parts, as they have on our other playground at school, um, for our upper grades. And replacement parts aren't available for this. And the fixes that they've done to keep it safe enough for the children as it stands are really Band-Aids, they're temporary fixes. We have composite decking, kind of bolted to one of the surfaces that has holes in it. They've tightened things that have just, you know, kind of come loose again, and they've kind of done what they can to make sure that it's not a really huge safety issue in the meantime, while we sort of pursue this project, and we started that several months ago. Um, we have obtained several quotes at this point for a new playground and what that might look like. And that's how we kind of scoped the project out and came through a fair average of what it would cost to do the work. One of the big things that we have and that we're focusing on is actually ADA compliance and accessibility. As you can see from the drawing right now, the playground is completely surrounded by grass, and is fairly inaccessible in any, um, kind of sense of the word. And we would really like this to be, uh, up to code accessible space that can be enjoyed by the whole community. Um, it, it's very unique, I think, among the other elementary school playgrounds, is that it sits squarely on Tilden Road. It's in front of the school, it's in open view, and it's a huge walking residential area that a lot of people do use this playground on the weekends, after school, during the summer. And we feel that through this application, we're serving the school and the students, but also the greater community as far as giving them a space that's safe and inclusive and accessible.
Okay, now, is this new playground going in exactly the same spot as the current playground?
Yes, and so we are working within the footprint of what the current playground sits within. And it sort of goes from, um, what really looks like a sand pit to the fence on Tilden Road, that's pretty much all playground now. Most of the designs that we have at this point, because we're keeping the cost controlled, actually take up a bit smaller space than that, but in no way are we going outside that footprint.
Alright, um.
And this is it over here?
Correct.
Yeah.
Alright, questions from the board? This is basically informative.
Mm-hmm.
Um, at some point, if and when this goes through, you know that you may have to come, you will have to come in for, um, site plan review. You are replacing it, same spot, same everything, we'll talk about stormwater and all the rest of it. Those are the things that we have to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
But it's good to give you a heads up, because I know that, um, Dan was a little bit undone when he discovered that his project went over budget, and it had to do with stormwater. Okay?
Those are the things, we wanna try and get ahead of that, uh, obviously, because we don't want to have the project be approved, and then three months later, find out that we, we need additional dollars. Nothing at this point points to that, because of the way that that land is graded, and also replacing it with poured-in-place surface, surfacing, it's a fully permeable material that doesn't affect stormwater. We do have a walkway proposed in here, so that we have improved access to the playground from the school, which is really something that we should do as part of this project. I could see that, you know, raising some stormwater concerns, but we wanna make sure that we're addressing that as early in the process as possible, so that we can plan for it.
The, um, the poured-in-place material, it is pervious?
Yes, it is.
It is.
And it has an underlayer of crushed stone, so it's.
Interesting.
Okay, um, and, I'm sorry, one thing we just wanna ask because of the CPC process, and of course Amberbine knows this, but we wanna, um, if there's any requests that the planning board has that we should do now, prior to them voting, whether to approve this for town meeting, we have the time now to do that, so that's also part of the reason why we came today.
Well, I, I, just, to that point, we'll give you what input we can.
Mm-hmm.
But we always reserve our final review for the actual, you know, submittal of, for the site plan review. So, if things come up during that period, they come up, um, but we'll give you what we can anyway. Um, I do have a quite, a broader question, and that has to do with Wampatuck School itself. What is the, what's the school committee's sort of expectation for that school? I know there was a lot of conversation at town meeting about the declining enrollment, right? And whether we're gonna need all these elementary schools, and what's, what's sort of the, what's the current thinking on that?
Wampatuck has never been in that, in, in that equation, when we've looked at the schools, that, when we, they've talked about whether or not we will have four elementary schools going forward. It has been two other schools, the, uh, all three of those schools, Cushing, Hatherley, and Wampatuck are about the same age. If you walk into Wampatuck, I'm very proud to say the, the structure is, is so solid. It's so, um, it's so much of a different feel in terms of the construction, um, compared to the other two schools, unfortunately. Um, so they are looking at the other two schools, it's not Wampatuck that is really on the line for that.
And, and Wampatuck, for all intents and purposes, is truly a neighborhood school.
Yep.
It really is a neighborhood school.
And the playground, if you drive by, I mean, it's always being used.
I would assume the other schools are neighborhood schools as well.
No, Hatherley isn't so much.
It's right out there, you know, we don't have, we, we suffer from it a little bit, because we're, our parking can be problematic because of it. But, uh, both Hatherley and Cushing are, are removed from the, the street frontage, Wampatuck is right there.
They're serving a population of kids, right?
Correct.
Yeah. In, in the surrounding neighborhoods, though.
But we have more walkers and bike riders than any of the other schools.
I, I was just more interested in, in whether it's going to be there long enough to invest three hundred thousand dollars in it, right?
And this question did come up at, actually, every meeting that I've been to, at CPC, it came up at Recreation. And, um, Run Griffin, Superintendent Griffin, has been working very closely with us on this, as you know. And he is, he couldn't be here tonight, but he's available for any questions. But he has stated in those meetings, just, you know, to kind of speak to what Linda said, that Wampatuck's included, and, you know, just looking at it from a control standpoint, but he doesn't anticipate any changes for many years to come.
And Wampatuck was, in the last few years, was rehabbed.
Right.
Correct. And they invested quite a bit of money.
Quite a bit of money into the windows, the boiler system.
Yes, everything.
Floors, skylights, everything.
So.
And for years had a really dedicated maintenance staff.
So, it's, um, I don't think that it's on the list.
Is there, um, does this get used after dark?
Does the playground get used after dark?
Is there lighting there now?
We discourage that.
Right, right.
I know, but I'm just wondering.
We're happy it's in the front of the building, it's a good asset, being in the front of the building due to any concerns regarding after dark.
There's no lighting here, or anything like that?
Ben?
Could you just tell me a little bit about when the playground's during, I guess, peak use, what? Is there any sort of parking or traffic, things you guys? Is there any sort of parking or traffic, things you guys have observed or that people have brought to your attention?
Do you mean outside of school hours?
Um, yeah, outside of school hours, because I know during school hours is a totally different beast with people coming and going and stuff like that.
Um, Linda can speak to this as well, but there's, for after-school hours, there's a lot of parking at Wampatuck. I think the biggest issue that we have at school is during the 10 minutes around drop-off and pickup time, which, um, doesn't relate necessarily exactly to the playground. What I can say is that the playground, one of its highest-use times, is the hour right after school lets out. And it's sort of the gathering place for all grades and parents and families, younger siblings. The parking's only the issue for, for the school dismissal, but not necessarily as it relates to the playground or during the summer after school. There's plenty.
Okay. And then my only other thing is kind of a comment, just my opinion, but, um, if, if you guys have to do stormwater work, you should try to create it, like, make it a value-added thing. So kind of design, uh, like, do placemaking and kind of design wayfinding so that you could use it as an educational opportunity to teach kids about the principles of kind of environmental science and landscaping with native plants and things like that.
We have put a lot into the outdoor area of Wampatuck Four in terms of natural science.
Yeah, I've seen that already.
We have the organic garden and we have the new outdoor classroom, which we, uh, was really done as a, a PTO endeavor. We also got Helping Hammers to build that for free for us. It was, it, it was a student-driven initiative where they designed it and, uh, over the course of three years. And it involves a lot of math, a lot of things. So if you look at our, there's, um, a rain barrel piece that we're putting in and gutters with that. We also have outdoor on the other side, uh, at the south, um, uh, playground, too, the gardens for the fifth grade. So there's a tremendous investment in the outdoor of Wampatuck in terms of the garden, in terms of it as an educational piece, in terms of kids being outside for instruction.
Right, right. Yeah, so I just, it might be another opportunity, if you guys have to do that.
Yeah, I think it's awesome.
And look at stormwater more as an opportunity rather than like this horrible thing, you know?
Right, right.
Which everybody sees it as. So this is the third, uh, Wampatuck has three playgrounds, right?
Well, we, yes, yes.
But this is the, the biggest that you have? I, I haven't been over there in a while.
Yeah, I guess it is the biggest that we have. It's, we're hoping, as we've been looking at what we're building, we're, we're looking at a different kind of structure than what we have. We, one of the issues is we have a, a one big piece.
Yeah, it's kind of-
And that's problematic for us in terms of, you know, if we, if that was it, we would be able to buy little components that would make this whole project a lot less expensive, and that's our goal going forward. That's what it is on the other side. The north playground has that. Uh, and so does the ECC and the kindergarten area playground, more small components. But yeah, this is a, the biggest structure that we have.
I remember there was always swings there. There's always swings there when I was a kid, uh, which all we had. This is a, a well-used and a, a really nice building, I think, of all the schools that we have in Situate. And, um, I, I don't have any children, so I, but I, I absolutely want everything the best for children. Um, and if we need a playground and we need to tie it in, then we need to do this. I mean, that's just one of the things of having children and investing in our future. So, uh, good luck. And I, I know it's a ton of, of fundraising that you have ahead of you, but I think you'll be able to do it here.
Could I ask a question about the money? Just, just to understand, how did you get the 300,000? And how, how conservative or liberal is that number?
Um, the document that is at the back of the large packet that I gave you, it actually has a little bit more of a breakdown of the estimates that we used. About $208,000 of that is actually the playground itself. So the playground equipment, the surfacing, the installation delivery and all those sort of nuts and bolts that come along with just building the playground.
Yeah.
Right now, we have $60,000 budgeted for the ADA compliant walkway to improve the access from the school building itself to the playground. We have accessibility from the back parking lot, very short distance to the new playground. But, um, in our conversations with, um, the Mass Office on Disabilities and the Commission on Disabilities in Situate, the, the spirit of improving a site like this is to make those improvements to the access from the primary use and having a better walkway from the school to the playground is really, really important. That estimate at this point, with some of the more recent quotes that we've been getting, is very, very generous. So we will, um, as our conversations with CPC progress, we're going to be fine-tuning this um, from a budget perspective over the next, um, two months. And we have in there just under $30,000 of contingency for things that come up, engineering, you know, stormwater reviews, site plans, things that we can't necessarily foresee. Um, one thing that we actually have that's relatively new, that we let the CPC know is Superintendent Griffin has hired on a playground consultant at the expense of the school administration to assist us. Obviously, I'm not a playground expert, but she is very, very well-versed in, you know, working with towns on CPC projects, building playgrounds, making sure that we don't miss anything, that we're taking everything into consideration and thinking of things, you know, kind of ahead of the game. So she's just started working with us this week and will be able to help us also fine-tune those numbers to make sure that we have contingency, but not an unreasonable amount of contingency.
And, um, the, so the, the, the actual construction process and all of that, who, who would manage all that?
The, as far as the build itself, the, no, the, um, the playground vendors are really kind of handling this from soup to nuts, even when it comes to the walkway. We kind of went back and forth on that. Can we have somebody, you know, kind of third-party come and build this? We looked to actually a school in Norwell that recently had to build an ADA walkway to their playground, but it's well within the wheelhouse of the playground vendors to do that. They do it, uh, all, every time that they put a new playground in. So we've actually now incorporated into their quotes, so we have sort of one place that we're managing through the process. And the playground consultant that Superintendent Griffin has hired, he's committed to keeping her throughout the project to help also manage it, should we get approved, should we get voted at a town meeting, so that she can keep a watchful eye on the actual build process.
I was really thinking of who's going to sort of, I assume you're going to go out and bid this? Who's going to do that process? Who's going to administer payments and all that kind? Who's going to do the project management, if you will?
Well, that, I would say, between the playground consultant that he's hired can help us manage the sort of nuts and bolts. We are working from a state-approved contractor list, so, um, everything that we've been told by everybody that we've talked to is that we don't have to go out to bid for this. We have the proposals and we have the quotes. And because we're working from that state-approved list, we, we don't need to actually go out to bid. So we know exactly what our costs are going to be upfront.
We've looked at a number of playgrounds, though, in, in, in terms of vendors coming out to look at the site and make, and make proposals.
So you have bids already, essentially?
Yes, yeah.
But somebody has to, obviously-
Assess those.
Do, assess them and then sign a contract?
Right.
And then pay them and all that? That's, is that the school doing that or is it the PTO or?
Well, we would be working hand-to-hand because we're, you know, asking for funding from the town. I think we would coordinate, especially because of the integration with the school. Like I said, Superintendent Griffin is so close to this project and would help if we needed to manage, you know, the budget and payments through the town, through CPC.
That's something you do, right? The CPC doesn't do that?
Yes, they will do that. And Nancy Holt is the one that keeps track of the, the money. The other couple of things-
She pays the vendors directly?
Well, the bills go to her and then it goes, it's somewhat complicated. It's, it's-
It happens.
Couple of things. First, the price of this, which seems exorbitant, I would say a third of it is state-mandated under re- rules and regulations of what you have to do, which is why parents can't be involved in any of it. Has to do with liability, has to do with insurance and so on. As an example, the, uh, playground in North Situate, $600,000 playground, $200,000 of that had to do with state regulations. It, no longer can people just go out and publicly build a playground like they did 20 odd years ago. Secondly, and even more, I think, very important and was discussed at CPC at length, whoever the vendor is that comes forward with this playground and builds it, it's virtually guaranteed for life. They will maintain it. They will replace things that need to be replaced if something is damaged and so on. So unlike some other things that have happened around this town, this particular playground will in fact be maintained for the life of the project, which I think is-
By the vendor?
By the vendor.
And is that under a specific contract?
It will be under their contract. So both of the, um, the two companies that we're working with, some of the final details on, they provide either biannual or annual inspections or, or on request in addition to that. They come out proactively, look over all of the equipment, all of the connections, all of everything, the material and the surfacing, and identify anything that might be wrong or coming loose. Some of the moving parts, those are sort of the most vulnerable parts. And they take care of getting those fixed and replaced. So it's not any sort of, you know, long national warranty claim process that we have to have facilities do. They actually, um, it's, it's pretty much the, the standard now that we're finding with these, you know, kind of top-tier playground builders is that they are really taking responsibility for it. They're not waiting for a phone call. They're, they're coming out to do that.
But it's, it's at their cost. It's not at the school's, at the town's cost. And who owns the playground? Is that the school?
It's the town.
It's the town, I believe.
It's town?
Right, because it's outside of the building on school grounds.
Okay. So it's town liability, then?
Correct.
Under the charter, the, um, town, um, is responsible for everything outside the buildings. And that's, that was changed a while ago.
And so does that mean that, um, the responsibility for oversight, et cetera, falls to the DPW? Or does that still fall to the school?
Do you mean the oversight of the project build? Is that what you-
Just the site, the use of the site, if, if there's a problem, knowing who to call and get people in to look at. I was just, I'm trying to understand how the process works, right? So that it doesn't become an orphan somewhere.
Well, currently, the school is really the one that, you know, we notice if there's something wrong. But we're the first ones to notice it because we're, we're out there at recess and we see what's going on. And our parents will bring it to our attention if it happens over the weekend or something. So, uh, at this point, I think we would, in the past, because we haven't had a, a playground that's under warranty, we've tried to fix it ourselves. And our, we've had custodians out there building pieces to add to cover up holes, that kind of thing. We've also contacted DPW for things like replacement of mulch, um, which has been just really problematic because it doesn't stay. You know, you have to use a lot of it and then it gets away and you're constantly addressing it. But, so it is a partnership really between the schools and DPW, uh, but we tend to be the ones who notice it first. I think in this situation, we probably would also notice it first as well as the vendor being involved.
All right, um, anything else?
No.
Tara, do you have any comments?
I, I think it's just, you know, making sure you've gone through the site plan review requirements and everybody's aware of them anyway. Stormwater review is, is definitely one of those things, right? So that will be part of the process and, and you'll probably have to have somebody look at it, you know, independent or, you know, independent engineer, somebody to look at it. But, um, as long as you plan for that and it's in the 300,000, you should be okay.
Would you recommend anything prior to CPC making their decision? Or would that really be sort of-
I would recommend you talk to-
Decision as we-
I would recommend you talk to some, you know, an engineer who does the stormwater review and make sure you have a price so you know that it's in your price.
Okay.
That you're not surprised, like Ann was talking about, you know, by, by a number that's different, right? But, um, I don't know how, you really can't go too much further in terms of design work at this point. But, um, but, you know, a good stormwater engineer ought to be able to give you a sense for what they think might be involved and, and certainly how much it might cost to do the, the design review and all that.
Okay. But, um, I think you've got a good project and you have your work cut out for you.
Yeah.
And so far, I think you're doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much. And is the town going to fill in the, um, pavement that I mentioned on?
Oh, at the, um-
Yes?
I would hope so. I haven't, I actually haven't heard the whole piece of the follow-up on that, but yes, I'm hoping that's the case.
Because they should, before someone gets hurt.
Is the playground still operational?
Yes. It is. It is. It's, it's-
And it's safe enough?
Night shift. I mean, it, it's safe and it's, I don't know, it's safe enough. I mean, it's, that's all I can say.
Safe enough for now. We did have Bob Vogel come to look at it. I think we would do that again at the beginning of the school year because I think it was December when he came out. I remember it was freezing. Um, and so I think he had some of those repairs done after that meeting. So I think it was just, you know, it's in all of our best interests just to have him come and lay eyes on it again and see if there's anything that should and can be addressed immediately.
Because we did consider taking it down when we, when we thought about the status of it and really hadn't had to have Bob Vogel and others look at it just to ensure that it was safe enough to keep going.
Yeah, what kids do today when I went by?
Yeah, it just becomes a, a question. I hope we're going to get a new one, so we'll, you know, kind of let it continue to go downhill.
Yeah.
The parents wouldn't let that happen either, no.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
And good luck with your project.
Thank you.
All right, um, we've done layers on reports. The other thing is zoning bylaw discussion. There are a few things that we need to talk about as far as zoning is concerned. One, such as lot config, is it lot configuration?
Well, this is Tommy here after the elections that you normally decide on what you're going to do. Uh, if you have any changes you want to do for the upcoming year. We, you know that we are working on the stormwater regulations. So that'll be, when we get something, that'll, the board will become, you'll begin to draft. But we'll state, we still have-
How long before that happens?
A while, because we still, um, we're still working on, um, first-
Like the fall kind of thing? Is that what we're thinking?
Yeah, potentially fall. We'll, um, we're working on a draft and then we'll go run by the, um, in-house people and then back to our development consultants, um, who are helping them. The board will probably see something. So I would estimate fall. So you have that. You're working on, also, the master plan will be, you know, starting.
Yeah, you're going out to bid on that shortly, right?
I don't know the timing for that. I mean, I got the RFP, but I haven't, I haven't had a chance to look at it. I know you've looked at it, but I haven't looked at it.
Yeah, I sent, I sent your comments in, yeah.
I haven't had a chance. You know that the EDC has been doing this visioning, um, for the Green Bush area. And at some point, if potential changes are going to come, it's possible something might come for the town meeting for next year. But, you know, the EDC and Platteburg need to work together to figure out exactly what that scope is. And then, um, I think that we have an issue in the bylaw that I think we really need to address lot shape. We, um, we talked about it a few years ago. And, um, I think the time has come that we need to address some of these irregular shaped lots.
And how do we do that? How do we go about doing that? It seems to me, sort of initially, it would be good to have, you know, where, where are those problems now, right, in town? And, and I don't know if you've got an inventory of that kind of stuff or at least-
They can come up with an inventory in pretty short order.
Yeah. I think we should have that as a baseline set of knowledge, right?
Okay.
And then it would seem to me, what are, what are the solutions? What are the potential solutions? First of all, you know, what are we trying to resolve? And then what are the solutions? What other, what have other towns done, right? In terms of addressing that particular issue? I, I assume we've seen some of that?
You've seen some of that a few years ago, but I think at the time, the plate was pretty, like, pretty busy.
Did we take that to town meeting? No, I didn't think so.
No, you didn't take that to town?
We got shut down on other things.
Oh, yeah.
I think that there wasn't a lot of, um, stomach to deal with at the time. So, I mean, um, I think you're, you're seeing, I think you're seeing some, a lot more irregular shaped lots.
Well, definitely are.
Yes, we are.
I'll do an inventory of some of the ones, but I think, I think you may have a better shot at, um, lot shape than floor area ratio, I mean, which is something a lot of other towns are doing as well. But, um, I, I think that with, I think stormwater rights is important and the master plan and trying to, you know, figure out what's going to be happening with the EDC visiting. Unless you guys have some other thing that you think is a hot issue that you think needs to be addressed, is there? Yeah, there'll be- Is there, yeah, there'll be housekeeping zoning bylaw at the next town meeting or in the spring to address a few minor housekeeping issues. Town council didn't, we didn't actually have some language in there that changed the zoning map and town council thought that, well, it's safer to actually, you know, as amended, you know, et cetera, instead of just putting it in there. So, that's general housekeeping type of stuff to match stuff that has already been approved. But this is a time of year where you guys normally talk about that stuff and what your preferences are, what you don't want to tackle, I mean, but you've definitely voiced stormwater and master plan and we're working on those.
Well, I also would like to make sure we continue to keep the pressure on the water and sewer, comprehensive water and sewer study too.
Right, that's right, yep.
Well, I know that this got shut down at town meeting about the frontage issue, the 50-foot frontage issue. And people complaining that the town is overbuilt. So, you know, if you change that frontage from 50 to 100, I mean, I think it's, could be a fight worth having. You know, people-
Well, 50 requires zoning board, right? So, it's officially 100 without a special-
Without a special permit.
Permit from the zoning board of appeals, right?
Right, yeah.
So, the only thing you could really do is sort of attempt to eliminate that loophole, if you will.
Yeah, and I know that that was tried before.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth it. I mean, what do you think?
We'd have too many people on the floor of town meeting going nuts.
Yeah.
Because often, these bigger lots are held with a family or whatever and somebody swoops in and they'll purchase it for a song and then suddenly, look at Samenski's on Country Way. That's a 50-foot front and it's a house in front of a house. And I have a real problem with houses in front of houses. But again, it has to do with property rights and so on. And if somebody's willing to purchase a house that's in back of another house-
Yeah, as long as, you know, that's sort of a real estate market issue. I'd be more inclined to try to address the irregular shape lot issue than the 50-foot frontage. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, that's sort of a zoning board decision and I don't know that, I don't know that I'm prepared to try to eliminate it. And maybe there's, you know, is there something that could be done to sort of provide more sort of guidelines around what is an acceptable 50-foot frontage and what isn't, right?
Well, you do have the requirement that a 50-foot lot has to have double the lot area too.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's one.
Well, the lots that were foremaned off of, was it Creelman and Manlot, they had little bits, you know, here and there and everywhere. Leo Costello with his foreman over on Long Meadow, in order to do his septic, he had to have a piece that went across something else. And then the same thing happened down on Meeting House, if memory serves me correctly. It happens all over the place. And then it's, well, who's responsible for this in terms of ownership? You don't even know where your property ends and somebody else begins because it's in the backyard or the side yard. So, we-
I mean, I can get to, you know, a packet of some of the most egregious ones. Manlot, Creelman is one, there's some additional ones on First Parish Road. There was that, I think it's Country Way Hatchet.
Hatchet Rock.
Hatchet Rock, you know, where you have to, you know, where there was a strip. There's, you know, we have multiple instances and it is hard for the property owners to figure out where their property lands are after the fact.
And the developers are becoming exceedingly creative, exceedingly creative, so. And if any of you have any other things in terms of zoning or changes or what have you, make a note and, you know, we'll put it on the agenda again. If there's something that, you know, sticks out, we'll talk about it. That's what we're doing.
The only other thing I'd like to know is, we're sort of in a situation on the Riverway about a development that was approved under special permit and it feels like we don't have any recourse to get the project built as it was approved. And I'm wondering if there's something we need to think about there to provide a little more teeth to the planning board?
I think that the answer to that, Steve, is if there is something that needs to be done, it's done first, not last.
No, but I still think that there ought to be, you know, sort of a final recourse for the planning board to do this, right? And I don't know what that means. And maybe, maybe town council can give us a little help on that. I mean, you know, one thing could be, you know, we could actually sue them for specific performance, right? If that were allowed, but-
Technically rescind something, but in this case, what would it do? It wouldn't-
That's my, that's exactly my point, is we don't have the tools to make sure that things happen that should happen, right?
And, I mean, on that project, you have had somebody, an independent party come to you and talk that they want to fulfill the conditions.
No, they don't. They don't want to build affordable housing.
Well-
That's the condition.
That was the condition.
All right? And that's the crux of the problem. Because I understand him as a third party saying, oh, I'll build the, you know, the store or the storage or whatever it is, but the deal was that there was affordable housing that was coming with it as well.
But he was willing to take the $50,000 in surety and donate that, if we can do it, or if he can do it, to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Or some type of-
Something mechanism for affordable-
Will that build us two units of affordable housing?
That's what I was getting at when I said I'd like to see data, what is that, 50,000?
Yeah, what's it going to do for us, right?
Not much.
It's an easy out for-
I mean, maybe you need to have higher degree of surety.
Well, I think what happens is very often, people come and ask us for forgiveness-
After they do it.
After they've had permission. And that's a huge issue, I think. It's, well, we've already done this, so what do you want us to do? Well, take it out or something. I mean, I think that that's just not enough teeth, as Steve says, in order to go forward with that.
Yeah, I don't think we should be at the end of projects like this in a position where we've got to settle for something because they've decided they don't want to fulfill their commitment, right? He made a commitment when he, when he got the, you know, approval. And it's been a long time, right? That we've been trying to get that commitment fulfilled. And I can understand why somebody else might want to buy it. That's not really the issue, I think. It's really about how do we get the benefit of the overall approval that we developed in the first place? And you tell me we don't have any more, any other recourse? And so, I guess I'm wondering, is there a way to provide us some ultimate recourse here?
And so, that's why when the board developed the conditions on 50 Country Way, you said that the affordable units have to be, you know, 7, 14, 20, 26. So, that something that was important to you was as a condition. You know, so you did learn, you did learn from that and you put it as a condition. So, you know, I think it, you know, if something's that important, it has to be a condition, it has to be built first.
Well, it was. It was for the Riverway, it was a condition, right?
It was a condition, but I think we have, we-
We're not, we're not in the position of letting people pick and choose which conditions they can conform with based on getting an occupancy permit or not, right? That shouldn't be the case.
Well, but-
So, I, you know, regardless of whether we asked for it first or last, shouldn't matter.
That's true, but it does matter.
It does.
It does matter. I mean, I think you have to do it before all the units of your prime development are occupied. You have to put it in there and you have to put some type of extra-
So, anything that comes after occupancy, any conditions that are post-occupancy, don't matter? See, I don't buy that.
It's all about enforcement.
That's what I'm saying.
I know.
It's about having the tools to do, to ask people to do what they committed to do. And, you know, it seems to me that we're in a position where we can't do anything. So, that's my question. Is there something that can be changed in the bylaws that provide us greater enforcement capability?
Well, we will research that and see what we can come up with.
That's just the question I was asking. The answer may be no, you know, in state law, you can't do that or whatever, but-
Okay. So, I guess the issue would be actually is, if we have a zoning enforcement officer, how do we make sure that they're doing their job? I mean, I guess is that the crux of the issue is? And if that person is not, how do we ensure that that happens?
Well, I don't think, is that the, is that the building inspector's responsibility to enforce that condition?
The zoning enforcement officer is supposed to be enforcing special permit conditions of the planning board. I mean, we try to help as much as possible by bringing to light which conditions have not been met.
And? They chose to not enforce them?
I, I mean, this was, this was a long time ago, Steve. I don't know the whole history of this project.
I don't either, that's why I'm asking. But we have people coming in saying, oh, I'll take on this responsibility except for, you know, the affordable housing component that was part of the deal. And I don't really have any issue with the guy who came in who was proposing to buy it and stuff, except that that wasn't the original deal.
Well, we're not going to solve that this evening.
No.
No, I'm just saying, you know, if you want to talk about things that-
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Can be addressed, at least in a bylaw.
All right. Anything else anybody wants to talk about? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful weekend, people.